I'm not coming. That being said, we're gonna, we're gonna bring, uh, we're gonna bring, I'm sorry, you, I'm going with that. We'll go ahead and bring our meeting to order. And so, uh.
Honorable Mayor Pearl Tim Alex Heath.
Present.
Honorable Lynda J. Davis.
Present.
Honorable Samantha Hudson.
Present.
Honorable Hattie Portis Jones.
Present.
Honorable Ulysses J. Smallwood will be late, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Honorable James Whitmore.
Present.
First item we have is Mid Chattahoochee, well, Mayor, you can go and call the meeting to order. I'm sorry.
Can I bring the meeting to order?
First item is the Middle Chattahoochee Regional Water and Sewer Authority presentation.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. We have with us this evening, General Manager and the Attorney and staff for the Middle Chattahoochee Regional Water and Sewer Authority. The staff has been in place for some time and they are here tonight to cover a presentation that we initially received back in August at our retreat. And so at this time, I will pause and turn things over to the staff and allow them to introduce who's here tonight and move forward with the presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Lyndy Farmer. I'm the General Manager of the Middle Chattahoochee Regional Water and Sewers Authority. And we're here tonight at the request of Mayor Avery, Mr. Phillips, to give a presentation of our retreat we had back on August the 10th. That was a rather lengthy, pretty much an all-day retreat. So we're gonna try and condense it for you and break it down, the various different components of that and everything. So with, let me go ahead and if I could and recognize the staff. We've got Ms. Andrea Gray, Project Manager, Ms. Laura Benz, Project Manager. We've got Mr. Davenport, who is the Attorney for the Authority. We've got Jared Jackson with the Krebs Engineering, our engineering firm. And I don't see Tom Owens here or David Gray. They probably will show up shortly. But if we could, I guess we'd like to get started, times of the essence. I think we've got two hours, Tony.
Hour and a half.
Nice try.
Excuse me. Can you give me your name again, please, sir? I couldn't catch that.
I'm sorry.
Give me your name again.
Lyndy, L-I-N-D-Y, Farmer, F-A-R-M-E-R.
Thank you.
So at this time, I think I'll turn it over to Ms. Andrea Gray.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure, oh, thank you. It's a pleasure to be before you tonight. As everyone has mentioned, we tried to condense a six-hour presentation into an hour and a half. So forgive us if we move quickly, but tonight, we're gonna cover the project history. Then our engineer's gonna talk about the engineering we've been working on and the project and the cost of that project. And then Tom Owens will wrap us up with an analysis of water rates and financing possibilities for that project. So to kick off the history, there we go. There's really three components that we're gonna talk about as part of the history. The first, Dennis Davenport, is going to talk about with regard to the formation of the Authority, intergovernmental agreements that hold it together, working through our relationship with Atlanta and service delivery strategy. I'm going to talk through the water supply project history, how we got from a reservoir to a direct withdrawal, talking through interconnections. And then Laura Benz is gonna talk about our pursuit of funding and then our assets, including land, the permit, and the mitigation credits and property. So with that, I'm gonna let Dennis come back up and talk through the key agreements and the Authority's formation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mayor.
I've been selected to talk about the history because I think I probably am the history. I've been with the Authority from its inception. I started working with Union City and the cities of Palmetto back in the early 90s before all this ever started. And the one thing that happened in the late 90s, there was a, a meeting of the minds between the cities of Fairburn and Palmetto and Union City. Once they started looking at the control that Atlanta had over their destiny as far as water, those three cities determined that in order for them to be able to have a hand in controlling their own destiny, they need to produce their own water supply. And that, that idea is what birthed this party. And it took quite a bit of negotiating, quite a bit of working through the process to even get the Authority formed. Knowing the history is important because it kind of shapes why we are where we are today. One of the first things that we had to do as an authority is to get legislation passed. And we did a great job of getting through till almost the final day when all of a sudden, the city of Atlanta woke up and realized that we were trying to form an authority with the three cities, and they didn't like that. And they, they put a stop to it. So you'll find in the legislation that we had to sit down and compromise. And our compromise was to limit our service area to the cities that formed the Authority, Palmetto, Union City, and Fairburn. Atlanta wanted to have the rest of South Fulton County, and we did not want to get in their way. So that's why you see that limiting language in the legislation. And it proved to be enough of a compromise to allow the legislation to go through, even though there was stiff opposition from Atlanta initially. So we got formed with that. And when, when the cities got together, they, they implemented that legislation by creating an intergovernmental agreement that set up the Authority Board. And Mayor Avery and Tony Phillips are sitting on that board. And Councilman Whitmore was on that board for a period of time. But that board has been populated over the years by various elected officials and appointed officials from the, from the three cities. We even rotate from city to city to city every three months, every four months, to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to have their level of influence with the Authority. So the board was formed, and the way to provide some financial credibility, if you will, is for the three cities to get together in an interim agreement and say, "We are backing the Authority with our full faith and credit. We are going to buy water from the Authority as our exclusive provider." Because if you don't have that basis to work from, it's gonna be difficult to raise money to get what you need to construct any type of a water project. And you're gonna hear from Andrea and Laura that during the timeframe, when you talk about a water project in metro Atlanta in this timeframe, you're talking about a reservoir. There is really not an option to go out of the river, it's gonna be from a reservoir. So our energies were spent initially finding a reservoir site. We've got the Authority formed, we've got the operations and maintenance agreement. Now, let's get to work and find the reservoir site. Now, I mentioned there was an obstacle from Atlanta, was, it was a direct obstacle at the legislature. But there was also an indirect obstacle that really reared its head as we started along, and that's the service delivery strategy. You've heard for years about it's time to renegotiate our service delivery strategy. And basically, it's getting together as cities and the county and say, "Who provides what service to whom?" And it's kind of a clearinghouse of information. I don't know if Fulton County is the only county in the state of Georgia, but we may be. We haven't had a service delivery strategy renewed since 2010. We are in a current lawsuit over the service delivery strategy. When I say "we," every city in Fulton County and Fulton County still don't have it finalized from 2009 and 2010. Maybe we'll get there soon, I don't know. The reason I bring that up is because it was an obstacle that when it reared its head, it was a considerable obstacle for the Authority to work through. Initially, we were known as the South Fulton Municipal Regional Water and Sewer Authority. And that worked out great for a period of time. But for you that know your recent history in this area, not only do we have three cities, now we have two more cities, and we have a city that was called, that is called the City of South Fulton. I can't begin to tell you how confusing that is, to be called the South Fulton Municipal Regional Water Authority. And I got so many phone calls from people wanting to contest their water bill with the City of South Fulton. That's not us, that's not us, we don't do that. So, anyway. In addition to the service delivery strategy, in addition to the obstacle we got in the legislation, there was one more issue that came up. And the other issue is an Attorney General's opinion that, that happened because as we go through this, we find Atlanta inserting themselves in several ways. I don't have anything against Atlanta, I'm just telling you the facts as the way they occurred back in the early 2000s. They were instrumental in getting an opinion from the Attorney General that unless you were part of a service delivery strategy, you were not eligible for any permits. Well, this Authority had to have a permit in order to build a reservoir that shut us down. So in 2010, the Authority worked tirelessly to get past what's called House Bill 406. All House Bill 406 did was to say, "Hey, if you haven't really produced anything yet, you don't have to be part of a service delivery strategy. Once you come online and produce water, for example, then you have to be part of a service delivery strategy." So it gave you an exemption while you're construction that you don't need to be part of a, of an SDS in order to be eligible for a permit. That was like moving mountains to get that little piece of legislation passed because Atlanta knew what it meant. And it was on the 11th hour, the very last day, there were a group of people that got together for a last-minute compromise. Atlanta allowed that to go forward because some of the Authority's consultants were able to facilitate a tax for Atlanta that was about ready to sunset. And we showed them how they could make that go a little longer. They liked that, they took away their opposition to 406. We all agreed to sit down and write a letter and agree to a letter that says what our service areas are. Seems pretty easy to do. The cities took the position that their service areas were their jurisdictional limits. Atlanta took the position that they have all of South Fulton County. It took two years to get that letter together. We did, and it's still not 100% clear, but it's there. It shows, it shows what our areas are, our jurisdiction is our respective city limits. The service delivery strategy was a state litigation. The Attorney General's opinion was a state obstacle. Atlanta's also in, well, it's actually over now, but it's still hanging on. It's the Chattahoochee River Keepers federal lawsuit where Atlanta's combined sewer overflows were negatively impacting the water quality in the Chattahoochee. Atlanta, when they get their revenues from water and from sewer, they don't keep them separate, they co-mingle them. So they argued to a federal judge that we three cities need to be part of their litigation. Because if we, if Atlanta loses our revenue, it hinders them from going forward and finishing their sewer projects. Now, keep in mind, us three cities, maybe less than 1% of their total revenue, but that was their argument. It sounds kind of crazy thinking about that today, but that took over a year of our time and resources just to convince a federal judge, "We don't need to be part of this litigation." That's the context and the history where we started. And I've, I've gone through that probably in 10 minutes. That took probably in excess of five to eight years, from start to finish, to go through all of that. Once we got to the other side, it's still a matter of, okay, we've got our initial legislation put together, we've got 406 passed, so we can get a permit. Let's get the permit. So what we did is we set the table to go to the next stage. But the history, the brief history that I provided for you this evening is a history of three cities that determined this is something we must do to control our future destiny, otherwise we'll be solely dependent on one source for water. And I'm gonna see the rest of this evening to the, to the folks that are gonna give you some more information about where we went from here after the context. And Andrea, is that you next?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, as I mentioned in the introduction, Dennis walked you through the, the legal and the Authority history. And now I'm gonna talk a little bit about the projects that we've worked on since the Authority's inception. The first, which I know you all are aware of, was the Bear Creek Reservoir. So in the early 2000s, EPD, the Georgia Environmental Protection Division, encouraged, if not required, that we pursue a reservoir project because direct withdrawals from the Chattahoochee River were not allowed at that time. And so that's why we pursued this project. The Bear Creek Reservoir is in Chatt, what is now Chattahoochee Hills, it was not when we got started. But it was a 440-acre reservoir, Normal Pool, a 754 mean sea level, that's MSL. And it yielded 16.44 MGD with pumping out of the Chattahoochee River into the reservoir. That was allowed, but you couldn't use the Chattahoochee as your sole source at that time. This project, again, we pursued from 2003 to 2017. A lot of coordination with the Corps of Engineers, Fish and Wildlife, EPA, EPD, DNR. Many, many studies were done. We cited the water treatment plant, we cited the intake location, you can see those components in yellow on the map. We also purchased all the land necessary to construct the reservoir from a number of different owners, but primarily from Carl Bucart, who owned the largest piece of land in, in the Normal Pool area. In order to permit a water supply project, you have to justify the need for it. And the need is based on your population projections out 50 years and the per capita usage that you're projecting out to that period as well. Seems easy enough, but it's not. The Governor's Office of Planning and Budget periodically releases new population projections. And the state wants you to tie yours to the state's projections, which is fairly easy if you're a county. But when you're three cities, you have to disaggregate the population that the state projects for counties into your three cities, which is an additional step. An added complication to this project was that the city of Atlanta not only sells water wholesale to Union City and Fairburn, but they have certain retail customers within your boundaries. So they're selling directly to some customers in your boundaries. And so in trying to get the need verification for, for this project, we had to work with EPD to figure out, okay, what's our population? What's our population less the city of Atlanta's retail customers? Working through that process honestly took years because Atlanta was not forthcoming with their information. And at the end of the day, we had to work with your cities to figure out which citizens were receiving trash service but not water service. And that helped us decide what portion of the population was a retail customer and which was not. So it was quite a process to get there. But finally, in 2017, EPD did certify a need of 13.25 MGD, which was a major milestone for this project. The 2065 population was 131,700 people, and the per capita usage was certified at 103 gallons per capita per day.
And could you, the acronyms, could you?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
If I, if I miss any, please stop me. So in 2017, the federal regulations changed, and we had to pivot from a reservoir to a direct withdrawal. The regu, the policy that changed was how the US Army Corps of Engineers was gonna operate Lake Lanier. Because the releases from Lake Lanier are what supply the water coming down the Chattahoochee River. And up until this point, we had been told, "You can't do a direct withdrawal because there's not enough clean water in the Chattahoochee River." Well, when they changed the policy here, they agreed to release enough water out of Lake Lanier to meet the needs for all of Fulton County. And so that meant that these three cities could receive the water supply they need without a reservoir, but just by withdrawing directly from the river. And not only are we allowed to do that, but it's required because in order to get a permit for a reservoir, you have to prove that it's the least environmentally damaging practicable alternative. And a reservoir requires a lot of impacts to streams and wetlands versus a direct withdrawal, which requires minimal. And so based on the comparison, the two options under federal law, we're required to go with the direct withdrawal. So we began pursuing the, the direct withdrawal based on what Dennis was telling you about the service delivery strategy. We could not apply for it in the name of the Authority. We had to apply for it in the name of the three cities. And so we filed that in 2018. And as a part of that process, we did extensive testing on water quality to make sure that the water was treatable in the Chattahoochee River. We did extensive modeling alongside EPD to make sure there was enough quantity of water in the river to supply the three cities in the, the most severe drought of record. In doing that modeling, we found that we needed a modified minimum in stream flow to be able to provide that water. And we worked with EPD, did environmental studies, fish studies, habitat, aquatic habitat studies. You know, it's hard to go through the presentation so quickly knowing how many years it took to get to these milestones. But that did all, you know, come, come to a head in July of 2020 when we did receive the water withdrawal permit. They issue permits for 10 years and you can renew them for the additional period that you need. It's issued for a max day of 11.4 million gallons per day, monthly average of 8.55 million gallons per day, and the annual average of 7.12 million gallons per day. Sorry? So at the time this was issued-
Hold on one second, ma'am. Would you do me a favor, Chief, and just ask them, we can hear them here in these chambers, I appreciate it. I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
No, no, no. So in 2020, when this permit was issued, it was the first withdrawal permit out of the Chattahoochee in 20 years. This was a huge accomplishment, a first, again, in, in 20 years, and an incredible asset to this Authority. Not many other communities in the state can say that they have 13.25 million gallons a day of reserve capacity in the Chattahoochee River. This is a depiction, and Jared will do a much more detailed overview of what the direct withdrawal option that we have permitted looks like. It's also, you know, in the same location as the Bear Creek Reservoir's intake was, and the water treatment plants in the same location as the reservoir option was. But again, we're, we're, instead of using the reservoir, pumping directly to that water treatment plant. And then here, you'll see, a little difficult to see, and Jared, again, will go through this in more detail. But the, the trans, sorry, the, the finished water, sorry, finished water lines running from the water treatment plant out to the three cities, where the cities would connect on and then use their own retail systems to distribute that directly to their customers. Following getting the permit in 2020, we got right to work. We hired Krebs Engineering to do a preliminary engineering report, which was provided and approved by Georgia EPD. We immediately installed a USGS gauge, which is a gauge that sits in the middle of the Chattahoochee River that measures water flow, so that once we start our project, they'll be able to determine pre and post flows in the river to make sure that we're passing enough water downstream to protect habitats. ARC, the Atlanta Regional Commission, did a source water assessment for the, the metro area, which was required as a part of our permit. In 2021, 2022, the Authority brought in an owner's engineer, Gresham Smith and Partners. And they did another, I guess, evaluation of the project and did additional cost estimates. So in 2022, those cost estimates revealed that the project was significantly more expensive than originally projected. And so the Authority took a beat and looked for other alternatives for meeting its water supply needs, including meeting with Atlanta and Coweta. So the Atlanta meetings and Coweta meetings have been an ongoing thing throughout the project's history. We met with Atlanta in 2012 as a part of the letter agreement that Dennis mentioned. And then again, in 2022, '23, and '24. and then again in 2022, 23 and 24, discussing options for possibly partnering with them. Ultimately, we were not able to, um, reach a consensus on a partnership mainly because the future plans that they showed to us relied heavily on resources that do not exist today. So for example, the map that they showed us of supplying the future of these cities showed a withdrawal on the Chattahoochee River in a location that had not been modeled, had not been permitted. Um, and you see how long it took us to get a permit. Um, and so, um, you know, that, that didn't seem to be the answer, um, to our, our hopes for a cheaper water supply source. We also worked extensively with the Coweta County Water Authority, 2011, 2015, 2017 and 2024, um, trying to see if an interconnection might, um, provide at least a short-term, um, option for the Authority to connect on to. And evaluating that option further based on the wholesale rate that they were offering and the cost of the infrastructure we would have to put in and the timing of all that, it really just didn't make sense to the Authority to pursue that option because of the expense versus spending a little bit more on its own project, owning its own assets and having a long-term supply rather than a short-term supply. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Laura to talk a little bit about everybody's favorite topic, money.
Good evening, I'm Laura Benz. I'm a co-project manager with Andrea and it's my pleasure to speak with you today. Um, Tom will get into more of the details of the funding. I'll talk more about kind of where, where the funding has come from thus far and where some of those resources went to, to produce the assets that the Authority currently owns. Um, as you can see on the slide above, there was approximately $41 million of bonds that were issued in 2003. In 2012 and 2014, the Authority applied for Governor's Water Supply Funds. We did not receive any of those funds. Those funds were primarily awarded to projects that were what we would refer to as shovel-ready. At that time, we had a draft permit, a draft 404 permit that Andrea referenced from the Army Corps of Engineers. However, it could not be issued because we were still waiting for that updated need letter from EPD, which was kind of in limbo due to our continued disagreements with Atlanta as to who was serving this area and at what amounts. Um, so we weren't able to get any of those funds. Um, we did get a $10.5 million Georgia fund loan in 2013. That was set to expire this year. However, Andrea and I had a very successful meeting with, um, Jifa on December 20th and they agreed to extend that loan. So right now, we're just waiting for the paperwork and the documentation to extend that loan so that way we can still retain, um, that access. Those funds have not been drawn upon other than a minimal amount to keep the loan open. Um, so those are just available funds to be used in the future. Um, in 2021, we applied for a $25 million Jifa loan. Uh, we were in the process of going through the underwriting, um, assessment with Jifa. Had given them almost every, all the documentation they had requested except for a couple of audits. Um, they had pledged to provide an additional 25 million. At that time, the funding resources were restricted to $25 million a year. Um, however, we had to withdraw that application due to not being able to produce, um, a financial audit from one of the member cities. Um, and so, uh, we were, we, we've had further conversations with Jifa about coming back when that information is available. Um, in 2021, we applied for 25 million in COVID relief funds. Um, we were not awarded any of those funds. Um, in 2022, we applied for 33 million in ARPA funds. Those funds, if you all remember, were exclusively given to the Hyundai and the Rivian plants. Um, I believe they've got over 200 or 300 million dollars apiece. So, so no local governments other than for those plants received, um, funding. And then in 2023, we've been and have continued to work with EPA, Jifa. Senator Ossoff's office has been tremendously helpful in helping to try to identify how we could get funds for the project, forgivable loans, grants, other types of financial resources using a variety of mechanisms and funding resources. So that includes having conversations with, about WIFIA as well as, um, drinking water SFRF, pardon me, and, and other, and other resources. So kind of, uh, this is kind of just a, a summary, a summary, uh, slide, if you will, kind of summarizing everything that Dennis and Andrea had talked about, trying to show exactly everything that's gone into with this, this water withdrawal permit. Um, we start, you know, at the very bottom, we've had land purchases. Right now, you own over 400 acres. There's been mitigation purchases, there's the legislation that's gone on, the continued coordination. Um, right now, as Dennis mentioned, your current service delivery strategy is from 1999. So we've been working through those issues, um, the certificate of need, as Andrea said, that alternative minimum in stream flow where we literally had to have biologists go down the Chattahoochee River and say, "All right, where's a pool? Riffle, run. If we withdraw this water, are we gonna, are we gonna strand aquatic species or are we gonna make it to where there's not enough water to meet existing withdrawals downstream?" And so there was a lot of work that went into that. Um, and so this is just to try to give you kind of the idea of this is, this is everything that's been put into it. But as far as assets, as I said, um, the Authority owns approximately 430 acres that are surrounded with the reservoir. The majority, 396, were purchased from an entity, uh, called-